So this is quite an interesting context for this discussion today. And we're going to talk about every framing from that global level right down to the local level and what it means for Dublin and the streets of Dublin and for the people who you represent. We're going to be recording the meeting today, so I trust that's okay with you all. And it's going to be shared on the road safety sec- The road safety section will share the link via email and post it on the Dublin City Council Road Safety website. So it's a resource that's available for others as well. And I expect to have a very robust discussion. It's an opportunity for questions and answers. This is a time to tease out issues and ideas and to learn from the experts that we've brought together in the panel today. To ensure that we have as much time as we can for the discussions and for getting through all the questions, we were thinking that it would be better if you can please submit your questions to each panel in the chat function. You can do it while they're presenting or afterwards. And then we don't start stumbling over, can you please unmute yourself and losing some time in any technicalities? And we can get through the questions and have more time for the answers and more questions. So please submit your questions into the chat function, either during the panel or afterwards. And I'll be moderating them and sharing them with our panel. Each of our speakers is going to be short and snappy and really share with you the critical points so that we can have that time for your questions. I know this is not an easy topic to negotiate with communities. And so this is a great opportunity for you as councillors to learn from this session. So we thank you for joining us and for making the time to be part of it. As I said, the critical factor for this year, and what's really interesting to me, I run an organisation called Walk 21, so I'm very interested in walking and the quality of life in our communities. But the critical factor around what happened in Stockholm in February and with the new UN resolution around the decade of road safety for action is it's a shift in how we think about the way we manage road safety. And so what's quite interesting from my perspective is that shifting, mode shift to walking and cycling and providing good infrastructure for that and creating safe environments for people, this is now a road safety agenda. It's not just about removing them or reducing risk. It's about creating safe environments for people. So mode shift to walking and cycling, which the national government in Ireland is very committed to and which in Dublin, I know that you are investing and engaged on as well. It's all part of the road safety agenda, and that's really exciting. There's so many imperatives for action. And I know that our first speaker today is going to talk more about that. So we are still waiting for the Lord Mayor. I wonder whether we should go to-
The Lord Mayor is just coming in.
Great. Welcome, Lord Mayor, to the workshop. Thank you so much for joining us.
No worries. Can you actually hear me, Bronwen?
We can hear you and we can see you.
Sorry, teams don't actually work up to the council a few times about this. So apologies, it took me a while to get in on this.
Your timing is absolutely perfect. I've done all my initial, you know, framing and housekeeping. If I can ask anyone else to turn your cameras off now, it will make it easier for everybody. And just make sure you are on mute, so cameras and microphones off. And then I'm very pleased to welcome to open the workshop this morning. Welcome to the Lord Mayor of Dublin, councillor Hazel Chu.
Thanks, Bronwen. Folks, thank you so much for joining us this morning. And good morning and welcome to the Loving 30 workshop. Firstly, let me thank all yourselves for being able to make yourselves available to join this morning. I want to thank Brendan O'Brien and the team in Dublin City Council. With a special thanks to Bronwen Jordan for chairing today's meeting and moderating. The team has been working very hard on their various parts of this. So I'm pleased to be introducing the Loving 30 project to elected representatives to look at the best practices on public roads and reduction of speeds. I know we've had a debate about this on councils. So this is a good workshop for us to come together to understand what the issues are. So Dublin City Council is committed on the development of high-quality cycle network and safe walking routes, which is, let's be honest, folks, really important for our current time in the challenges that we face at the moment in light of the pandemic. I think we all know our reliance on cars in the past and on congestions in the road. What we want to do here is have actual model shift on providing sustainable, safe transport for all when it comes to Dublin city. The interim mobility intervention for Dublin city from May 2020 recognised the importance of reduction of speed limits to protect large numbers of pedestrians and cyclists in the city due to COVID-19. So again, I guess I loathe to say the word opportunity when it comes to such a horrible challenge and virus that we've had. But there has been an opportunity to make our city a safer space for walking, for cycling, for our residents in general. So Dublin City's Corporate Plan 2024 aims at promoting cycling and walking by providing relevant and adequate infrastructure. There are also plans to support growth, compact growth and connected infrastructure as more and more people use these facilities and they opt for walking, they offer cycling outside and inside the city. For these plans to be successful, however, we must be able to protect pedestrians and cyclists. We must be able to make them feel safe when they are walking, when they are cycling. We want to encourage a model shift, but we need to play a crucial part in how we provide that, how we secure that shift for people, that we make them feel safe and make them able to offer these options. So Dublin City Council has progressively introduced 30 km speed limit to many areas of the city. And Dublin City Council will continue to implement 30 km/h speed limits in residential areas as per approved Phase 4 Speed Limit Bylaws 2020. Currently, the installation of the new speed limit signage has been resumed in places, in phases for all remaining areas. And it's expected to fully be in place by mid-2021. Now our city requires that we look with urgency our arterial routes. Now is the time we extend 30 km/h further and protect cyclists, pedestrians and vulnerable and road users, making Dublin city a safer place. The main objective of Dublin City Council Road Safety Strategy is to reduce the number of casualties on the streets of Dublin, making Dublin a safer place for all. And it's a very logical approach, in fairness, to the team and all that have worked with the team. We base our findings on scientific evidence that impact at a certain speed higher than 30 km/h would have greater risk and greater casualties than an impact at 30 km/h. So there is overwhelming evidence of this, that the reduction of a speed results in fewer collisions and results in lower impact of damage. So what do we want to do? We want to bring 30 km for everyone in the arterial routes. We want a calmer city, safer roads and shorter braking distance. We want, it gives the driver a better view of their surroundings and makes it easier for them to see pedestrians and crossing roads and cyclists. And ultimately, it also makes the city a quieter and safer place for all. So there are international best practice examples. So we are following the lead in many places in Europe. So Paris has a 30 km in its core. London has a 20 mph, which is 32 km in its core. And Brussels has 30 km in its core. So again, this is not something new that hasn't been tried and tested. It has been and it has been working effectively. Encouraging active travel is key driver as well. The fact that, the fact is that endorsing a 50 km on residential and village high streets will always deter active travel. So particularly with the young and the old. So our job is to make Dublin city a international best practice and lead with what the international samples have given. So Dublin City Council has been committing to reviewing these speed limits across the city. And it is why we have this workshop today to join in discussion. So I would like to thank everyone for taking the opportunity to be part of this workshop. I hope it will be informative and I hope it will be collaborative. And I hope it will provide us with the results that the city needs as well. I'll now hand you back to our Chair, Bronwen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. We appreciate that open framing that you have given the discussion today. Thank you for joining us. Thanks. I'd now like to pass the floor to Brendan O'Brien, who's Head of Technical Services and Traffic for Dublin City Council, for his opening remarks. Thank you, Brendan.
Okay, thanks Bronwen and thanks, Lord Mayor. And welcome to the elected representatives and the other people in the workshop. So I'm just going to give a very quick overview of where we are, I suppose, with the 30 kph and change in speed limits. But I would like to say thanks very much to Rosanna in particular for organising this workshop and also Helen Smirnova, who was in charge of this section and has moved on to one of our neighbouring local authorities. So last year, as part of the COVID mobility response, we took a decision that we would go out to public consultation on a change to the default speed limit in Dublin, in Dublin city and the Dublin City Council administrative area. So prior to, I suppose, 30 km being introduced, the default speed limit in Dublin was 50 km, which meant that it was quite a, I suppose, a legible city in that once you entered into the city, you knew what the speed limit was. And the only time we actually signed a different speed limit was when the speed limit changed. So whether to 60 or to 80. As we introduced the 30 kph into the residential areas, that clearly meant that we were now putting up signage on entrance to streets. And you had this, you know, going from 50 km to 30, 30 back to 50 and so on. So as part of, you know, really thinking about the way the city wanted to function and so on. And also as, you know, taking into account that during COVID, we saw a lot more activity on the streets around, particularly kind of the urban villages around the city core. It was felt that a 30 kph default speed limit should be proposed. And what we would do then is we would, the streets that clearly should not be 30 km, that should be either 50 or 60 km, will be signed by exception. So it would make the city quite illegible, you know, kind of reintroduce that legibility and certainty for people that they knew the default speed limit was 30 and only if it was signed anything different should they drive at a different, at a different speed. So as part of that, we went to our statutory consultation. The response, there was, I suppose, there was more people opposed to this move than supported it. And one of the other items was that some people, you know, particularly some of our elected members came back and said, you know, we think you shouldn't go 30 on some of these roads, it should be 40. Unfortunately, with the way the statutory consultation works with speed limits, when you go out with a speed limit scheme, it's either you approve it or you don't approve it. You can't alter it without going through the whole process again. So as a result, that particular iteration fell. And so we had committed to looking at the issue of should some roads be changed from, instead of moving from 50 to 30, should it be 50 to 40? And also doing some more, more in-depth consultation with the elected members before we actually put a scheme out. So our intention really is still is to go out with a scheme in 2021, which still addresses the arterial routes. One of the, sorry, one of the items really is, you know, should it be 30 km, should it be 40 km? 30 km is kind of, you know, the end of the space of the safe speed limit, I suppose. So as you can see here, as we move from 30 up to 40, 48, we start to see that the percentage of fatally injured rises quite sharply. And again, we can see it on this graph here between 30 and 40 here, we can see this rise. So while it's, I suppose, you know, something that people consider and would like us to consider, I suppose, one of the objectives of this workshop and some of the other engagements we're going to have is whether this is the correct approach. And I suppose one of the other things, I had mentioned legibility and making it clear what speed limits you were driving at, you know, so we could potentially have somebody driving from a 30 to a 40 to a 50 to a 60 to an 80 all in the space of the city. So whether that's something that we should be considering or whether it's better to go for the default. Obviously, again, you know, length of speed limits, you can't, you can't change, you know, very quickly from a one speed zone to another speed zone. So there are limitations on that. So it's one of the items that, again, we want to consider. So some of the elected members came forward with a couple of proposals for some streets to be 40 km. That's something that, as I say, we do want to consider. We will be presenting to the various area committees over the next while on these speed limit bylaws. So the intention is to try and, and with the area committees, to try and reach agreement in what the roads in their particular area should look like as part of the statutory consultation. So that when we go to the statutory consultation, we have an agreed scheme this time, which hopefully will be successful and will allow us to roll it out. So that's really all I wanted to do is to give you the position that we are at the moment and hope that this workshop is successful. So thank you very much.
Many thanks, Brendan. That's a really great scene setting for the where Dublin as a city is at and the process that you're undertaking. Thank you very much. I appreciate that there has been some questions come into the chat, but I would like to hold them until we have our question and answers. I think Brendan, you'll be here for those, for that session or we can have a discussion about those impacts. So thank you councillor Declan for the question. It reminds me for the people who have arrived a little bit after the start of the meeting, we are going to bring all our questions in through the chat function today so that we have the most time available for answering them and for the discussions and inputs from our panelists. So I welcome all the questions into the chat function and we'll feed them out in the discussion. Moving now to our panel, our first speaker is Rod King, founder and campaign director of 20s Plenty for the UK and global expert on road safety and working with communities and to bring about this paradigm shift in thinking about how we manage speed in our cities. So without no further ado, I would like to welcome Rod to speak and to share his screen with us. Rod, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Technical people, can you, anyone who, Anne Feeney, please, could you turn off your camera? That would be really helpful. And then we'll have Rod. Great. Please go ahead, Rod.
Okay, can you all see me okay?
Yep, you're great.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Well, first of all, I am delighted to be here. As Bronwen said, I lead the 500 local campaigns around the world. Where, you know, it's almost universal in communities that they want lower speeds in towns and villages. I've had a long association with Dublin and Ireland. I remember my first international presentation was in Dublin. And I was asked to come back and present to the Cities' Traffic Committee in 2005 at City Hall. I've also presented at many Road Safety Authority lectures. And I'm proud to have received the Irish Road Victims Association Light of Hope Award in 2017 form of work. But enough of that. Let's get on to 30 km power urban limits and how they're really becoming the global norm. And this is so important because the limits which authorities set endorse the appropriate speed for those streets. It sets the reference point by which drivers judge their speed as legal, illegal, in line with what the communities need or out of line with what communities need, in line with public consensus and accepted social behaviour or outside of those limits. So that's why it's very important. Right, are you seeing my change slide now, hopefully? The slide here, it shows a picture of people wanting 30 km/h limits in Argentina. You know, it is right away around the world. And speed is something which causes harm. But when we look at it objectively, there's actually few benefits from going faster. Because often a speed limit is the maximum speed between congestion points. Right? And it has little impact on overall journey times. And we know that 60 km/h as a speed limit, it's almost murderous. It actually creates so much ability for people to get it wrong and have tragic consequences. 50 km/h will still kill people if you come into an impact between a pedestrian or a cyclist and a motor vehicle. 40 km/h, well, it's suboptimal for pedestrians. But if there's the right segregation for pedestrians, cyclists and the right crossing points and the right junctions to take account of their needs, then there is a possibility that 40 km/h is acceptable. But it's widely recognised that 30 km/h is the only safe speed for most roads, which is shared between motors, pedestrians and cyclists. And who said so? Well, the United Nations General Assembly. And it's not just them, it was going back to that Stockholm declaration, which was presented by a global selection of experts on road safety and then adopted by 130 road safety ministers from around the world. In fact, the default 30 km/h limit will be the single focus for UN Road Safety Week in May 2021. And you know, it is the foundation as well for a decade of road safety, 2021 to 2030. And one of the reasons is it's something that can be done in 2021. We can all get on with it. It doesn't require huge infrastructure. It doesn't require huge changes in law. It's something which is there. And we know from perhaps our experiences with COVID, there is never a silver bullet. But it's a little bit like vaccination. It's something which we can do everywhere. And lower speeds can actually make our places much safer. So let's just take a look at exactly what it was that the, the speed management by the Stockholm declaration. Here it is. "It resolved for the strengthening of law enforcement to prevent speeding and mandate a maximum road travel speed of 30 km/h in areas where vulnerable road users and mix in a frequent and a planned manner, except with strong evidence of exists that higher speeds are safe." And what that does, that reverses the burden of proof. No more are we actually saying, oh, you need to slow down here and say why you need to slow down. But it says, here's a new reference point which we use, which is 30 km/h. And we're all going to identify where it is safe to go faster than that. And that is only going to be on the base of evidence such as segregated facilities and facilities which make it safe and build back that safety into that particular road or street.
One please, Rod. Just one minute, please.
So coming to my final slide. "The public supports lower speed limits. In successive surveys, 70% of people say that 30 km/h is right. It's recognised as the right limit. It's a minimal increase in journey times. There will be speed limiters on all new car models from 2022. So increase in compliance is being done throughout Europe as city defaults. And do it because you can make a difference. And you can turn your vulnerable road users into valuable road users, safely contributing to make Dublin a better place to be." Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Rod. That definitely gives us the framing and sets the global agenda and the imperative for action this year for adopting a 30 km/h speed limit. I'd like to pass now to councillor Donna Cuny, who is the Bicycle Mayor for Dublin. I'm sure you all know her and she is going to share her thoughts with us. Donna, are you there? And Rod, can you turn your camera off? How are we going, Donna? And whoever's managing the starring, could you un-star? I think we get the slides up instead of the person. So there we go. Great. Donna, do you want to share your slides?
I will do.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm sharing the right ones.
Great. Perfect. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so my theme is why 30 km is good for all. And I suppose just to give you a bit of background, the other councillors know me well as a councillor, but I was appointed the bicycle, first bicycle mayor of Dublin in 2019. And I was selected for that role prior to my election as a councillor. And just to sort of add to the general confusion, then I was elected in May and inaugurated as a bicycle mayor, the first bicycle mayor, the 50th bicycle mayor in the world. There's been a lot more since. But I have a, so it's a long history, just to give me my, so it's 26 years of campaigning for safer roads. And I was a former spokesperson for the Pedestrian Association. And in that role, I was asked to present. In fact, my first radio interview, and I suppose how I opened even my, my opening into, into politics and the idea of getting involved in politics was in that role. And my first radio interview was with Connor Faulkner and myself having a discussion or debate around safety for pedestrians. And we were on a couple of radio stations and on Gay Byrne at the time, who was given the Freedom of City, was very interested in road safety as well. And then when we were bringing, then yet again, RT interviewed me about the 30 km. They're 26 years later, or 25 years as it was last year, when the proposal was to bring 30 km in as standard. So these changes can take a lot of time. At the time, Dublin City Council Lord Mayor asked the Pedestrian Association into City Hall to give a presentation. And I gave them a report. And at that time as well, they adopted the European Charter on Pedestrian Rights, which was brought in by the European Parliament in 1988, in 1995. And we adopted in 1998 and we adopted in 1995. And so the European Charter of Pedestrian Rights opens up, "But the pedestrian has the right to live in a healthy environment and freely to enjoy the amenities offered by public areas under control, under conditions that adequately safeguard his or her physical and psychological wellbeing. Two, the pedestrian has the right to live in urban or village centres tailored to the needs of human beings and not to the needs of the motorcar and to have amenities within walking or cycling distance. Children, the elderly and the disabled have the right to expect towns to be places of easy social contact and not places that aggravate their inherent weaknesses." Now, the facts, people are asking, you know, questions as to why, you know, 30 km, can we not have 40 km, can we not have 50 km? And the facts are that, you know, people can think 10 km doesn't make all that amount of difference. It doesn't feel that much faster when you're driving in a car. But the risks of pedestrian deaths arise exponentially with the collision speeds beyond 30 km, and that's the reason. It's estimated that less than 10% of pedestrians would die when struck by a vehicle travelling at 30 km/h, compared to the fatalities of 26% at 40 km/h and over and 80% at 50 km/h. So that's, you know, if you were driving in your car and you hit somebody at 30 km/h, there's a very, very low risk of that person dying. So, you know, 1 in 10, then you increased your speed up by 10 km. You're talking about 1 in 4 people dying. And then up to 50, you're talking about, you know, a very high, high percentage of deaths at that stage. And that's a people, that's not talking about people that are more vulnerable who are maybe, you know, 70. And it's not just people, it's animals as well. As everybody knows, you know, a dog can get off- As everybody knows, you know, a dog can get off lead or a cat or get out of a garden gate and across. So you're talking about people and animals, both domestic animals and wildlife. So also, speed and the social connections. This was a study, I don't think we've done enough studies here really about this, but you know, and we do have anecdotal evidence and we have brought in safe zones with 30 kilometers. And we can see the impact that can have in our areas. But this was a study that was done in Switzerland. And it looked at, you know, the social connections. So basically, when you have lower speeds, you have more social connections, more people connecting, more people talking. Obviously, it's quieter, the air is cleaner and people feel safer and they start to make social connections. So it brings benefits to community as a whole in terms of neighborliness in a community.
Donna, just one minute please to wrap up.
One minute, okay. So reducing speed promotes walking and cycling. So this is why it is good for all of us, because reducing speed promotes walking and cycling, it reduces all traffic injuries, both for the drivers and for the people that may be hit. It improves health, transport efficiency, the environment, air quality. There's actually less PMs, which are small particles, when a car is driving slower, because there's impact, even if a car is an electric car, there's the impact on the road, there's the dust from the road, there's the tires, there's the braking pads that all bring pollutants into the air, the economy, the community livable. So you have to love 30 so we can all live happy, fulfilled lives. Thank you.
Lovely. I like the happiness factor that we're introducing there. Thank you so much for wrapping up. I'm very pleased to now pass to Mairead Forsyth, who's from Love30 Ireland. And Mairead, if you want to put on your camera and share your slides. And Donna, you can turn off your camera, which I'm sure is what you're doing, as we transition to the next speaker. And it's really clear, there's no debate about the lifesaving value of speed limits, but also these broader social benefits as well is a really critical part. Great, so Mairead, have you got your camera then to turn on? Yeah?
Can you see my slides?
No, not yet. We need you to share.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Turn your camera on.
Yeah.
I can hear you, which is lovely. It's a good start.
Yeah, I had my camera turned on, just a moment.
And I think we've well established why 30 is the magic number when it comes to fatalities. We've now also established it's a magic, speed is a magic factor in social connections in our communities. And Mairead, I'm sure you've got some more additions to that.
Some of what I would say, I'm running into a little difficulty here. I seem to have, oh wait now, hang on a second, no. I don't think I can share.
Can you turn your camera back on?
Yeah, that might help.
That's a good start.
Yeah.
It's not working. We're close. Yay, there you are, fantastic. Now, can you go?
You haven't got my slides, you haven't got my slides, okay.
Go to the show, Jenny. Yeah.
Should be coming up now. Yeah, got it, almost there. Sorry about this.
Okay, so we need you to turn your camera back on.
Yeah, just a moment. You want my camera back on? Now, can you see my slides?
Not yet. Yes, fantastic, great. Please go ahead, Mairead, and share your thoughts. We can't see you, but I think it's better we just crack on with listening to what you have to say.
Okay, I tried to press it. Anyway, thanks very much. I'm delighted to be here to meet everybody this morning and to talk to the councillors. I'm from Love30 and we are a group who are advocating for a 30 kilometer an hour speed limit in our city and town centres, in residential estates and outside schools and places of public assembly. We are, we represent walking groups, pedestrian groups, cyclists and people who want, who respect children's right to play and generally people who support livable streets. Much of what is in my slides has been said already and I can't see my slides.
Okay, so we have your first slide up, which is talking about how our speed is.
Right, so I'm going to my second slide, so.
Yeah.
Okay, now I think both, I think everybody so far has covered fine. We need 30 kilometers an hour. It is, it is safer and it is safer particularly for vulnerable road users, pedestrians and cyclists. It's also safe, we must remember, for older people and for children moving around who may not be so confident or competent at using the road. It reduces the severity of injuries that occur. It also reduces the number of collisions. And the interesting thing is that the group who benefit most from 30 kilometers an hour speed limits are motor, road drivers and motor passengers. There are less collisions and there's injuries among, on motor vehicles. So that's an important thing to remember in the debate, that it's not just the pedestrians and cyclists. Now, as well as being safe, and I think everybody, all speakers so far have emphasised how much safer 30 kilometers an hour is, and it is absolutely imperative that we try and achieve it for the whole city. The 30 kilometers an hour is also very good for things like health and wellbeing. It encourages young people to move about independently and their parents to permit the children to move. It helps to combat rising levels of obesity and inactivity. And it can change our urban spaces from car dominated through roads to vibrant, living, people friendly spaces, which I think is what we all need. And we have seen it so important in these Covid times. The other thing is traffic moves more efficiently because there's less stop-start. And we've seen this in the course of recently for varied speed limits on the M50. That when you lower the speed, traffic actually moves more efficiently. There's less air noise pollution, there's less carbon emissions, there's an increasing number of people walking and cycling. And as Donna mentioned, it's not just the engine pollution, it's the braking and the noise, it's the braking, the particles that are released when cars brake. So, you know, there are all sorts of benefits other than safety. And the stats support us, London, 50% of children killed, injured, less road crashes, less people killed, killed and injured. And people are more like, children are more likely to be allowed to play on the road. Older people are more likely to move around. It gives a more social air to streets. It's, they're less noisy and less speeding traffic. So they're all the reasons why we should do it. Now, there are a few mythbusters here because I think that, you know, the reason that maybe councillors were looking for higher limits on some roads is that they're under pressure from constituents who say, oh, we can't drive that slowly. You know, it would take ages to get anywhere. It only feels slow because people are used to driving fast. Once people get used to driving at a slow speed, it's quite easy. There's been another debate around what gear you should drive in. But I think once people get used to driving slowly, they will just get used to it and do it and adjust their driving behaviour accordingly. But it's not been used to revering your race, and we know that.
Just one minute please, Mairead.
Okay, it's not an extreme measure. Moreno has had it since 2005 and 96% of the residents would oppose reverting to a higher speed limit. So that just shows you how popular it becomes once it's been introduced. And I mean, the idea that you could walk faster, it doesn't delay motorists. In fact, a survey done by Dublin City Council showed that from Sandy Mount Christ Church, it reduced, it increased the time limit by a minute, a minute is the only difference. It doesn't stop people coming into the city centre for business. In fact, the evidence is that the slower the speed, the calmer the streets are, the more likely people are to come along into the street, into town and go shopping and use cafes and restaurants and things. So it actually will promote the use of the city, I think, to have lower speeds. So there you are. We also have the Stockholm Declaration, which people have mentioned. And we were delighted in Love30, that Dublin was leading the way in Ireland and showing us as an international city that follows the international norm and has lower speeds and a calmer way of life for citizens. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Mairead. I think that was a great presentation to bust a few myths. I'm particularly fond of the one that says that people could walk faster. I'd like to meet the person who can walk 30 kilometers, 30 kilometers per hour. That brings us to the end of our first panel. And if I could ask those three panellists to put their cameras on so that they can join us, ah, great, for this discussion. And for everybody now who is here with us, and I'm glad to see the numbers are still going up, we are taking questions through the chat function today, just so that we have the most time available for the answers from our panellists. So I would really encourage you to put your questions into the chat function and then I can share them with the panel. And we have one already from when Brendan spoke earlier. And it's about the impact on public transport and whether that had been looked at. And if it had been looked at, whether that, any information about that could be circulated. So I'd be interested, I'll go to Brendan first on the panel because it arrived during his presentation. But I would then, any of my other speakers, if you would like to comment more generally about the impact of speed on public transport, I see Rod's going to come in after you. So we'll go to Brendan and then let's go to you, Rod. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that item did come up and we did discuss it with the NTA or the Public Transport Regulator. So the target speed for QBCs in Dublin is 22 kilometers per hour, right? So a 30 kilometer speed limit on bus routes is not considered to be in any way, you know, detracting from the public transport. And I guess the other thing we should say about that is that, you know, buses are some of the largest vehicles that are used in the city. So the idea that somehow we should not impose lower speed limits because some of the largest vehicles that use the city would be delayed, I don't believe stands up to any scrutiny. I also feel that, you know, it definitely sends out a message, the 30 kilometer zone, that these are areas that people, you know, use and vulnerable road users use. And that the whole message should be around reduction of speed in these areas. And really, I, you know, across Dublin, if you think about a bus service, which is our main public transport, they're normally stopping, starting, stopping, starting, letting on, taking off. I genuinely don't feel that this will have any issues. And as I say, we did consult with the NTA on this matter and they raised no issues with us about this move to 30 KPH.
Great, thanks Brendan. Over to you, Rod, for remarks about the relationship with public transport.
It's great for public transport. And the way to think of it is to look at it with perhaps the marketing directors of the public transport companies. Because, you know, every one of their customers is a pedestrian. Every one of their customers walks to the bus stop. Every one of their customers stands at the side of the road with traffic going past it. Every one of their customers therefore gains from a 30 kilometers per hour environment. And this is one of the things which I think was influential in the Welsh Government, where the Welsh Government is setting a national 20 mile an hour limit or 32 kilometers per hour. And that first and last kilometer for the National Transport Company was very important in them supporting it. But then if you look at it from a driver's perspective as well, it reduces the differential speed between drivers in cars and the passengers in a bus. So that is beneficial to the bus company. It actually enables the bus to pull out easier when it's at a bus stop because the traffic around it are travelling slower. And also, another advantage is that the energy required in the bus to get to 50 kilometers per hour is three times higher than the energy required in that bus to get to 30 kilometers per hour. So when you actually look at it all objectively, this is a win, win, win for bus companies and public transport.
Great, thanks, Rod. Donna?
Yeah, just to lead on, it is actually a win-win. A more integrated transport system works better with lower speeds and that's been proven across other cities. Also, the European Charter, which I mentioned beforehand, which Dublin City Council has adopted, includes four pedestrian rights, is access to public transport. So it ties in very nicely with all that. Also, a bus goes by my children's school, both, you know, both entrances. And the very idea of it going any more than 30 kilometers an hour is a really big worry, you know, little children and big buses going at speeds, it's a very dangerous combination.
Great, thanks, Donna. I have another question now from councillor Anthony Conahan. He's wondering about, it's a good political question, but do you think 30 kilometers per hour is a cop-out for government who aren't doing enough for cycling and pedestrian infrastructure? Mairead, would you like to pick this up first? Yeah?
Yes, I don't think, I don't think it is a cop-out. I think that the, you know, the pressure for lower speed limits has been coming from people, from people, representatives, from councillors, from organisations that are concerned. And I think government has been slow to react. The 30 kilometers an hour we have was led by the campaign led by Jakes Legacy that got 30 kilometers into residential estates. We have, in Love30, have asked both the former minister and the current minister for transporting the light of Covid, if they bring in a default 30 kilometer an hour speed limit in urban areas. And we had very little, very little reaction. I don't think, I don't think it's a cop-out. I think 30 kilometers an hour should be led by local authorities. And I think that, I hope local authorities are doing their best to try and improve facilities for cyclists and pedestrians. And I don't think it's a cop-out at all, no. No, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, I'm going to join this up with the next question, Rod, before I let you answer because I'm conscious of time. And Janet Horner is asking, what are we doing as a city to make the infrastructural changes necessary to make 30 kilometers per hour a comfortable speed for those driving? At the moment, it seems that wide roads with multiple lanes incentivise high speeds, even on residential streets. So we have an infrastructure challenge. But is it, start please with the, is it, is it something to do when you can't, when you're not doing something else? Rod?
I think one of the things is to think of a speed limit as only an interaction between the driver at the time and the state. It is not that. Setting a default speed limit is about setting a new social consensus on how we drive in the presence of people, right? So I think that's, that's an important element of it. And, you know, you cannot, you can build infrastructure everywhere, but it will take an awful long time. And one of the problems with building the infrastructure and relying upon what I call communicating with drivers through buttocks and spines, it's extremely expensive and it misses out on the real goal, which is actually to say, I do not measure the speed at which I'm going to drive by the width of the road, I measure it by the presence of the people. And that is something which is going to be hugely enhanced when Dublin is able to piggyback on the Global Road Safety Week, which is coming right from the UN. And I think there's an important message. We're talking about build back better after Covid, but why can't we drive back better as well? Drive at a pace which will actually make our community streets better places for the people right on those streets and look at it from their perspective. And I say, sometimes we need to look at it from the perspective of an eight-year-old rather than inside a car.
Exactly. The windscreen, the windscreen view is always one that needs balancing out with the others. I'm going to go to you, Donna, but I would like to pick up on a question that has come in during the answers to this because we've understood that speed is something we can do soon and quicker than infrastructure, but we need to bring along the infrastructure and continue to provide for safe facilities. The next question that's come in that I'd really like to pick up before we go for a break, and I'm capturing the other things here for later, but this is about enforcement. If we're going to run speed in a space that people aren't contained in, could you pick up on the question about enforcement of the law as well as this, the need around infrastructure? Thanks, Donna.
Yes, I mean, I think we need both. You know, obviously, we can bring in 30 kilometers, it brings a whole new change and emphasis It brings, it brings a whole new change and emphasis and culture and prioritising the whole hierarchy of, of, of transport users, putting people before sort of, you know, vehicles on, on the, on the road. But I mean, it's, it's, it's also bringing in infrastructure. We have funding now. We have a million a day to be bringing in walking and cycling infrastructure. So we need to be working on that as well and we need to be looking at, you know, the public, public domain. But in terms of enforcement, yes, that's very necessary, you know. And I think that there should be stricter, stricter penalties for people that are, are speeding, you know, you know, rather than just getting a couple of penalty points, I think they should be losing their licences far quicker. And, you know, perhaps we need cameras around, there's speed cameras and automatic fines and, and penalties. So I think, yes, legislation enforcement is important, you know, it can't be just done on a voluntary basis. But I think a lot of communication and information, so we need a, a multi-approach on this, you know, it's not either or, it's, it's all, all of the above.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that, that Rod, you put your hand up and Deidre Henny has her hand up. I am conscious that we're going to go to a break in, in a couple of minutes. And there is, a question has come into the chat around the relationship with forty kilometres per hour. Now, I would like to leave the debate about the forty kilometres option. We've touched on it already in terms of the consistencies of communication within the community by Brendan at the beginning. But if, to Anne Feeney, if we will hold off on the forty kilometres until our second discussion, I'll make sure that we bring it back. But I'd like, I'm happy to go back to Rod and we'll have a, a couple of remarks before we close. Deidre, thank you for writing in the chat. I'll pick that up while Rod, I'll pass to Rod. Thanks.
Okay, on enforcement, enforcement is possible. In, in Bristol, even in Somerset Police, in twenty eighteen issued twenty-five thousand and sixty notices of intended prosecution on twenty mile an hour roads, right? So it is enforceable, right? It will be down to the will of the, the, the police and you may have to work on the guarder there. It doesn't need to be policed everywhere, just enough for people to know that it is enforceable, it is a legal limit. But the big game changer is intelligent speed assistance when it comes in on all new car models from next week, next year, which are sold in the EU. And that will mean that you will not be able to exceed the speed limit unless you override your car. So people want to ask me, who is going to enforce thirty kilometres per hour in the, in the future? Well, it's going to be BMW and it's going to be Audi and it's going to be Volkswagen and it's going to be Jaguar, because they're building speed limiters to every one of the cars which they sell. So everything which we know about compliance will change and get much better, right? As from next year, which is when your thirty Ks will just be coming in. So it's all timed, very good for a default thirty K.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Rod. I just want to close the conversation now. We're going to have a break until ten past eleven. Just with a couple of remarks, picking up on Deidre Henny's point about cultural change. And it is critical. We can't do this without cultural energy behind it and engagement with the, with the community. And there's some very interesting ways that this can happen throughout the community, but we need that commitment to making that change at the same time. So I'm going to, we're going to go for a break now. We'll be back at ten past eleven with a new panel of speakers and then for another session of questions and answers from you to, to bring us up to, to midday. Thank you very much to the three speakers this morning. It's already lots of food for thought and there are lots of opportunities here for, for broader discussion. And I look forward to seeing you at ten past the hour. Thank you very much. Rod, just to let you know, you're not muted there. Just in case you're having any private conversations. So we're going to start again in just two minutes. So if you are busy doing something else and can hear me and want to rejoin the session, we'll be starting with our second panel and our second time for questions in just under two minutes. I'm just about to restart. Now, this is the more odd moment I've, I've had with one of these sessions, always after the break when you, people have no cameras and no microphones on, but I'm trusting that our crowd is gathering, that we are, we are back in the room, which is lovely. Oh, that's nice. There's a face. Antonia, hey, thank you. That's very nice. Antonia, maybe you'd like to turn your camera on because you're our, our next speaker.
Hello.
Great, they're lovely. Right, so we'll get started again. And I have got the questions that we didn't get to, particularly this very chewy one about forty kilometres an hour and arterial roads. I think we must, this is a time to wrestle with that. So, so I hope, I've got that parked ready for the, for the Q and A. But for now, I'm really pleased to hand over to Antonia Martin, Active Mobility Communication and Promotion Officer with Dublin City Council. We talked before the break about this critical social contract to bring people along with us on this slower journey for our city. And Antonia, you'll be key to that. So please share your screen and slides with us and we-
Is that coming up?
Not just yet. We can still see you rather than your slides.
Okay, let me go back at and we'll try with this way. How about there?
Almost, yes, perfect. Great, thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, hello everybody and delighted to have the opportunity to speak to you all today. So thanks for the introduction, Bronwyn. Yeah, so I work in Dublin City Council on the Covid Mobility Team and a part of that, we're rolling out a school mobility programme. And so the, the aim of it is to encourage and support more children to walk, cycle and scoot to school. And a big project has been the installation of school zones and I'll go into a bit more detail a bit further down. And we supply cycle and scooting parking to school. We support with walking and cycle buses and park and strides. And we have some online resources to promote active travel to school. But what are the big barriers? And so the numbers of children walking and cycling to school has reduced quite dramatically since the nineteen eighties. You can see there, and the graphics, they've gone from fifty percent in nineteen eighty-six down to only twenty-five percent in twenty sixteen. And I suppose this next slide shows the, the big reason why and it's that unsafe environment caused by a huge amount of cars in the vicinity of the school gates. So we've got a bit of a chicken and egg situation where parents might feel it's unsafe for their children to walk and cycle to school and hence they drive them, but that, that leads then to more cars, more congestion and increases the risk, the safety risks at the school gates. And, but it is possible for children to walk and cycle to school and we do need to remember that, that most children live within one kilometre of their schools. So walking and cycling should be something possible and it should be something available to the majority of children, school-going children. And on Toshka Green Schools, there's a survey with school principals back in June and they asked them what were the key challenges at the front of the school and that ninety percent saying the vehicle parking drop-off congestion. Almost seventy-four percent say no dedicated or separated cycling access and a sixty percent saying vehicle traffic speed was one of the biggest challenges. And then asked specifically what measures they'd be supportive, what front-of-school measures. And sixty percent, the highest number, saying that they would be supportive of reducing traffic speeds outside schools. So just a, a little bit of information on school zones, which we have been implementing recently in Dublin City Council around the city. And the concept was developed by Green Schools in partnership- And the concept was developed by Green Schools in partnership with the NTA, and it's a set of design features introduced to assist in creating a safer, calmer, more attractive environment at the school gate. And it consists of, I suppose, the school zone gateway marking. So you can see on the top of the picture there, and if I go back, you can see clearly the, the school zone mark. So as you enter the school zone, you'll see those. And the colourful circles demarcate the area around the school, and then the pencil-shaped bollards there, either on road or on the footpath, depending on the width, to prevent that legal parking on the curbs. And in the case of Francis Street School here, we, we use the opportunity to remove some on-street parking, create extra space for pedestrians, school-going children on that route. The objectives really then are to highlight the presence of the school, to discourage vehicle drop-off, encourage drivers to slow down, increase the safety at the front of school. Obviously, it prevents those cars pulling up on the curbs and blocking the visibility of the children. It makes it easier for children to walk, cycle and scoot to school by keeping the school zone clear, and it prioritises and increases active travel to and from schools. So that's one of our key objectives. We installed the first two in late August 2020 at Francis Street in Dublin 8, there was a picture there earlier on, and Central Model School in Dublin 1. And following those successful implementations, we contacted all schools, inviting them to express interest. So 105 have applied to date, and we've installed 29, that's since kind of September. So we're, 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 we're really prioritising it, and we've had some really positive feedback where they've been installed, just a few comments there. More children definitely walk and cycle and scoot into school. Aesthetically, the school and surrounding area has been greatly enhanced, and it's illuminated the new school, and families commentate, commenting on how much more relaxed and safer the journey is to the school gate. But I suppose we do have some barriers. As I said, 105 schools have applied, but 37 of those schools are in, their self-reporting has been in 50 kilometre per hour zones, and those 37 schools, I suppose, are spread around the, the city, so they're not confined to, to a particular area. But unfortunately, then, in accordance with the NTA school, school zone design principles, the installation of school zones are not deemed suitable in areas where vehicular speeds are greater than 30 kilometres per hour. So we can't implement the school zones in, in areas with, with higher speed limits than that currently. And so these pictures, I suppose, show some of the areas where we, where the schools are in those higher-speed areas. And so quite a, quite wide roads. And so if you have high speeds, children trying to negotiate to get to school, obviously quite a scary environment there. So sorry, those ones were in Stony Batter and Harold's Cross, and we have had quite a bit of correspondence from some school principals in those areas, saying, look, you know, can you support us? Can you help to, to, to make the school, to, to implement a school zone here? And the second slide here then shows just outside Griffith Barrick School on South Circular Road, again, wide, busy road, the speeds can be 50 kilometre zones there, and then Collins Avenue is, is the other picture there. So, and again, those higher speeds, I suppose, will also lessen the, the, the potential for parents to allow their kids to walk and cycle to school. So what are we calling for? Thank you, last slide, thank you. So I suppose, from our side in, in the, in the COVID mobility team, working on this schools' mobility project, we would call for lower speed limits at school gates, that the default speed limit of 30 kilometres per hour should be at all school locations, and this will, you know, straight away increase safety. And obviously, you've, you've heard from the speakers this morning about how, how, how much it does increase safety when, when the speed limits come down. And this will also open the opportunity for, for us to install the, the school zones at those schools where we currently can't do it. And those knock-on effects are massive, I suppose, less vehicular traffic if, if the parents feel it's safer for kids to walk and cycle to school, less traffic, reduce congestion, improved air quality, more children walking and cycling to school, which will obviously lead to better physical and mental health, and shown to have that exercise, shown to have better concentration at school. And so thank you very much.
Great, that's lovely, thank you. What a lovely picture to finish on as well. And as we keep hearing, more and more reasons are stacking up. If you can stop sharing-
I'm, I'm, apologies, yeah.
That's all right. We'd be happy to help you with those emails, but you probably, thank you so much. I'm going to ask Dr Damian Otama now to speak. He's the National Cycling Coordinator at Cyclist Ireland. He's going to share some perspectives from his European Cycling Federation work. Damian, are you there to turn on your, there we are, lovely, perfect. Please go ahead, Damian. Please unmute Damian so that we can hear you and we can see your slides. Great, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, apologies about that. Look, thank you very much indeed. Let me see, am I in the right place? Yep. Look, thank you very much indeed for the invitation, delighted to be here today. I want to give a perspective from the European Cyclists Federation, I'm on the board of the ECF for the last five years. See, is that slide changing?
No, it's not, Damian, but you can click on number two on the left or put it into play mode again.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
As it suits you best.
Yeah.
Yeah, lovely, there we go.
Okay, very good. The ECF, there's members in 47 countries, 47 countries, 74 members in total, and in Ireland, cyclists.a is the member for ECF, and we have 25 member groups around the country. And even over the last few years, there's more and more groups emerging, a lot of them are focused on placemaking, some of them greenways, some of them more cycling orientated. But the key point is that they want more livable, livable places. In terms of what the ECF does, it's about, it's really creating, you know, good research evidence for cycling, it's about creating networks, it's about doing projects, and it's really about building up the know-how about how to make our cities more, more friendly for people walking and cycling. So I want to go back to the, to the, what I think Rod mentioned earlier on, and this is the, the recommendation of the academic expert group that convened for the, the global conference in Stockholm in early 2020. And I think that the quotation which jumped out at me is this one, and it says, "In order to protect vulnerable road users and achieve sustainability goals addressing livable cities' health and security, we recommend the city's mandate a maximum road, maximum road travel speed limit of 30 kph unless strong evidence exists that higher speeds are safe." And it's that last clause which is, which is critical, unless strongly, strong evidence exists that higher speeds are safe. And that really comes back to where you, where you have your exceptions. You know, the 40 kph suggestion has come up a few times, and I think if you look down at the graph, between 30 and 40, there is a big jump in the likelihood of a fatal collision as the speed increases. And that's really at the heart of the argument around 30 to 40, and indeed up to 50. I know most people are familiar with this graph at this stage. When I first saw it many years ago, it really, it really hit home that, you know, that the momentum and the kinetic energy of the vehicle really increase exponentially once you, once you, once you increase the speed. So I want to give a few examples, there's a lot happening, really there's a shift in thinking and policy happening all across Europe at the moment, so in Paris, in Helsinki, Bilbao. But I want to focus on Brussels, it's where the, the European Cyclists Federation have their, have their offices, and I'm, I'm back and forth there a lot, and I used to live there back in 99, and I've seen the city change a lot. And they've really, they really are establishing themselves as one of the cities leading the way on the Stockholm Declaration of 2020, which endorses the, the 30 kph limit. And this is a map recently published for, for Brussels, so not just the, the very central part, but all of the, the 19 communes in the city, and the vast majority of the roads are 30 kph, that is the norm. There are a few exceptions. Now, there are exceptions for its 20 kph, these are home zones where, you know, kids playing on the streets, but the, the main exceptions are for 50, and, you know, one or two for, for 70. And, you know, these are situations where you can demonstrate that you have high-quality, wide segregated psych facilities, pedestrian facilities, crossing points, again, done to a high standard to cater for high volume. So, but the broad point is that the norm in Brussels is for it to move to a 30 kph default limit. And there's some very good, they, they produce some very good material on this at the moment, not just in, not just in French and Flemish, but also in English, where they go into the reasons for it. And, you know, it is, it is partly safety, it's bound up with the, the braking distance. At 50 kph, your braking distance is around 13 metres to go to stationery. At 30 kph, it's just five metres, so there's a, there's a huge difference there. But it's also about noise. Brussels is actually quite a noisy, noisy city. Anyone who has stood near the European Commission offices, the European Parliament offices, near, near Rue de la Loire, heavy traffic volumes, it's a noisy environment. So part of the logic in bringing the speeds down is to create a more livable city where people want to spend time in, do their business in, have their children go to school, be able to chat to their, to their friends. So this is really a logic which is infusing the, the shift that's happening. And that's really the main points I want to say. Again, the other examples, Paris this year is, is really revolutionising how, how the city is, is performing, and Bilbao as well. And there's, there's really lots of good examples, and I'm happy to explore any, any of the points I just touched on during the questions and answers. So thank you very much indeed, Bronwyn, and thank you very much to the other panellists, and look forward to some questions later on.
Fantastic. Thanks so much, Damian, that's very succinct and, and clearly illustrates the energy for Europe, for this across Europe. I'd like to go now to our final speaker, so Damian, please. Great, we'll switch to Lorraine Darcy, Dr Lorraine Darcy, Senior Lecturer and Co-Chair of the Master of Science in Sustainable Transport and Mobility at TU Dublin. She's going to talk to us about reaching out to the community, because this is clearly part of our challenge, and then we'll move to questions after her presentation. Thank you, Lorraine, please go ahead.
Thanks, Bronwyn. So, hi, everyone, and for anyone who doesn't know me, just to say that I, I'm a traffic engineer, a transfer planner, a behaviour scientist and a health scientist. So I'm coming to this with a number of different perspectives, but also I strongly advocate for what we call walkable and livable cities. And, you know, this is, like, the traffic part of it is really important, and I want to just kind of tip on that and how we communicate this information. So we woke up this morning to the news that Dublin has now dropped out of the 10 most livable cities in the world, we're down to now number 15. And just to say, what does livability mean, you know, because this, this often comes up. But livability, or walkability, is the extent to which the built environment is friendly to the presence of people, walking, living, shopping, visiting, enjoying and spending time in an area. So, like, when we think about our city, we need to have a shared dream for our public space, because this is where we spend our lives. And we need to break from that negative discourse around traffic in cities and picture what kind of city we want. So let's focus on the city that we want and how we can get there, and that's our happy, healthy, connected, beautiful and enjoyable city. And one of the main things that we have to break through and, and challenge is actually our social norms and accepted behaviours. And these include the way in which people drive through neighbourhoods and the speeds in which they do that, but also how we, how we approach the design and how we approach the discourse around it as well. And we also need enforcement, and that's thankfully, it's been mentioned already, but it's something that we cannot emphasise enough. And, you know, there's a lot of, this is, this shows factors affecting physical activity, but really this is factors affecting all behaviours within an environment. So how people behave, like, we do have associations with gender, our beliefs, our age and our skills and our social environment and who we, who we socialise with, but our built environment actually has an overarching effect on that. So the places we provide for people dictate how people use those spaces. And we need to think about how do we support people across the life course? Do we support everybody? And like, and, you know, we need to think not just about ourselves, not just about the loudest voice in the room, who's missing and how are they provided for? So I love this slide because it just captures what results in our walking behaviour. When we see people walking, we know that the place, they, they feel like they belong. So if you look at the walking needs section of this, they have a sense of belonging in that space. There's a sense of pleasure, it is comfortable, and comfortable, comfort is the key thing. They have a sense of safety, this can be from crime, but actually quite a lot of the time from traffic. And how useful is this space for them? We also know that if all citizens of the EU, adult citizens, walked additional 15 minutes a day, we could prevent 100,000 premature deaths each year. And this is something we've all kind of, we've all bought into that public health message. So let's see how we can better improve our public realm. So what's important, the, the place at which we make our decisions about how we're going to travel and how we're going to behave is our streetscape. And our streetscape is where we need to focus our retention, because that is how we're going to affect behaviours. And we need to move away from designing for the cars, as a centration, so car architecture. We need to think about the movement of people, not the movement of vehicles. So we need to think how we can best move as many people. So that needs, and we need to think about where people want to move, for the majority, they want to move around their neighbourhood. We need to think about the catchments, the corridors, connections, and really to focus on the health and wellbeing, the economy and the environment. And we have, we're limited by working within the existing, and it's a historical city. And this year, we've, neighbourhood has never been more important to us. We, we now are spending so much time, more time in our neighbourhoods, we're understanding more of the challenges. And the thing is that we are now spending more time in our neighbourhoods and getting a sense of what those people who are generally confined to the neighbourhood, these are our older people, these are parents of small children, and, you know, how socially isolated these people have been, and, you know, the opportunities to interact, are they there? And I want us to kind of, you know, take, take from that hindsight is 2020, let's just learn from 2020 and build from that. So we've learnt that we need more, you know, more space as well, I'll come back to that in a second. So once upon a time, we lived in our villages and we occasionally went to other places. But then, oh, hold on, that's not what I wanted next, oh, I'll have to come back to him. But then we started building these roads to get us into the city faster, right? You know, theoretically, we say that this was the men travelling to work in the offices in the city council decided, well, this is a problem, I can't get to work fast enough, so let's plough through everywhere and get there faster. And the focus was on the commute, not on community behaviours. And here is this, you know, like this engineer, just like me, once upon a time, you know, the, the focus on, you know, how do we measure success? And we measure success in traffic about the speed of the journey, how quickly can we get there, and the traffic flow. So it's about how many cars can we move through a space quickly? And time has always been the thing that we, we value in relation to, you know, we spent all the money to get there faster. And this is what we resulted in, we, this is what we got. And what comes with this is actually, you know, when we have, these wider roads have designed speed, which then give us wider carriageways, and we know that that space between the buildings is precious. But also it comes with, when we have these wider, higher-speed roads, it also comes with associated infrastructure such as these, you know, barriers that are there for road safety, because, and that comes from the design standards to do with these roads.
One, Lorraine.
Yeah, so this was since High Street in London, and actually when they, when they took away these, they had a 64% reduction in traffic fatalities, or pedestrian fatalities on the street. So one of our key challenges is the car advertising tells us, if you buy, buy a nice car, you're going to get there faster. But the reality is our streets are funnels. But if we give more priority to movement within those villages, and a reduction in the speed limit for the whole city will allow us to actually apply the design standards that will facilitate more pedestrian infrastructure, and what we get is actual better traffic flows, because instead of all being blocked up in one place, we get that slower flow. And that is one of the hardest things we have to communicate. I thought it was a few more minutes, Bronwyn, sorry, I thought I'm only at six minutes, but that's fine, I can finish there if that's-
Finish the thought, that's, share that trip, share-
I wanted, I wanted to come back, the one thing I wanted actually was the best cities protected children. Children are an indicator species, so that if we see children and older people using the neighbourhood, we know it's a good neighbourhood, because for 5,000 years, children walked with no fear. And it's only in the last few years that we've stopped walking, and it's because of the fear of the car. Okay, I'll finish up there.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry to cut you off. I think there was actually a slide there which you use, which I recognise and know. If you could go back to the priority slide, I just want to, yeah.
Yeah.
This is done by a colleague of ours, Daniel Sauter, and I think in the, in the conversation that we're having today, which is not, there's no argument about the technicality of the importance of speed reduction and its impact on the level of fatality and serious injury that results if we have high-speed environments. But what we have to shift is the understanding that this cultural dynamic and this social contract, and that's what we're having such interesting conversations about. And I think this just reinforces that understanding about where we have placed our priorities historically, which is all our expertise, money, support, policy, high profile is in long-distance trips and reducing trip times, instead of the vast majority of trips that we do every day, which are these short-distance trips, which can be done by these alternative modes of walking and cycling in our local communities. And these are- and cycling in our local communities. And these are the pyramids that we have to invert to, to adjust on that social paradigm. So sorry for stealing some of your presentation, Lorraine.
Fine.
I loved it. I use this slide a lot. So thank you very much. If I could ask all our speakers to come back and join us, you'll stop sharing. That's lovely. And we'll have our speakers put on their cameras. Thanks, Damian. Thanks, Antonia. And Lorraine. And we've already got some questions in. In fact, the first one's for you, Antonia. You might have seen it in the chat already. It's a very site-specific question, but it brings us to this nutty con, this nutty issue, which is the issue here in Dublin, which is, why can't we have thirty and forty and sixty? And you know, like, there is a question around the cultural challenge of having. Lorraine, you are still sharing your screen just so.
Oh, am I? I thought it was dumped. Sorry.
That's right. Great. So we have this issue about different speeds for different arterial roads. We have the issue. And this is a critical factor I really would like to understand. And you pick, you, you touched on it, which is how many schools are on arterial roads? So whose priority are we, you know, whose choice are we prioritising? And I'm going to just jump straight in here as, with the privilege of chair, which is even at a lower speed limit, cars can still move through that space, but children won't walk to school. So to me, these are some of those fundamental things that we need to be grappling with. So Antonia, maybe if I can go to you, because again, the third thing this picks up. So we've got the forty Ks, we've got the arterial roads, we've got schools. And we've got COVID. And we know that people have been speeding during COVID. It hasn't been great for safety. It's been great for other things around travel and air pollution and, and things. But maybe this is specifically about a group in Inty Core and wanting, but they are on a arterial road and they're trying to come up with creative options, potential for a trial. So Antonia, would you like to, to dump in with this question? I've given you lots to answer, but, but please roam across them as you, as you like.
Problem. So yeah, there's, there's a couple of questions in that. I think the school zone is focusing specifically on, on the school gate. And I suppose one of the things we're aware of, in, in some cases, it can push the bad behaviour a little bit further down the line. So we've, we've taken on two dedicated schools outreach officers to work and engage more heavily with the school, with the parents and, and the local community to build that understanding of what the school zone means and to encourage that behaviour change. Because it's no good if, if, if it just moves it down the road. Because as you rightly say, or as the question rightly says, we, we have to look at the whole route to school. So the school zone is a start and I suppose, and, and as part of COVID as well, creating that extra space for walking and cycling was helpful when children, you know, there was different stagger times to go in. And in some cases, they needed to wait outside. And we, we, we needed that space urgently for, for social distancing. But, but there is a bigger picture and there's the bigger route to school. And our engineers are looking at that and we're engaging with, with certain groups strictly around cycle buses and, and walking buses and, and looking at the bigger picture. But there's a lot more, I suppose, perspectives to, to take on when you're looking at the, the larger route. What, what other stakeholders are there? You know, are there businesses that get delivery and, and different things? So it, it will take a bit more of an intensive engagement. Now, we, we are just starting a walk-in and cycling, the development of a walk-in cycling action plan for Dublin City. And part of that will be that engagement with local communities to get all perspectives and have an open conversation about, look, if we do that, who's affected and, and how can we bring everybody's voice into the conversation? But I suppose what I, I think is the most important is that those vulnerable road users and particularly children are prioritised because if we can embed that behaviour from the young age and put them first, then that's going to be, like, that's the future. So I, I think prioritising children and really looking at that school routes is, is a really good place to start. And, and that's definitely going to be a priority, priority for us in, in the next year. But I, I suppose about the, the, the specific location around Inty Core. Some of the engineers have, have been looking at it. In some cases, it's not, it, 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 it may take a bit longer to implement some of the suggestions. But they're, they're, they're all, I suppose, being reviewed and assessed. But it'll be part of that bigger city project. And that walk-in cycling action plan is really looking at, it's not looking at the big infrastructure, but it's looking about the local links and, and how we're linking people there and, and trying to prioritise that. But doing it from co-creating these solutions with the communities.
Great. Can I ask also, while you're there, Antonia, do you have any plans for May for Road Safety Week? To do outreach around schools and things like that? Is that on your, on your agenda?
Well, we'll be linking in with the road safety team. And as I said, we, we have our, our schools outreach officers. But also, you know, other, other people on the team then that we're, we're all about kind of promoting the, the act of travel. But we'll be very much liaising with the, the, the road safety team and, and working with them for that particular week.
Great. Because the synergies here are so, I mean, we, we're very comprehensively across the synergies now between safety, social quality of life and, and, and health and, and all of these different things. And so it's, it's what's really exciting about this agenda. Lorraine, did you have any comments on this very multi-dimensional, but perhaps particularly this issue around arterials and forty Ks and schools and, and COVID? So please go ahead.
Yeah. And I think that we also need to look at the fact that these arterials are also cutting through, as I mentioned, through our urban villages. And this is where our local shopping areas are. And you know, it's a real barrier. And you know, for places like Ternier Village, if I cross roads with only three pedestrian crossings, it's, you know, it's, it's nonsensical to me. I just don't understand it. And I know that it's that way so that the, the traffic flow can be maintained. But there are people who live in a very close distance from that village who are driving down and parking in car parks within the village rather than walking down. And for me, this kind of blanket lower speed limit, what this does is it, it actually just gives everyone a footing on which we can implement urban realm strategies, where we can actually have discussions about every school, being on an equal footing, starting off for their, so an equitable distribution of school streets. And you know, where there's a case to be made for a higher speed limit, let that, because there's actually less of those, because most of our city is, you know, residential streets. There's actually a low proportion of arterial routes. Let them be the ones that have to apply for, you know, exemptions rather than the residential streets for every application for something in their own community.
Great. Damian, I'm going to come to you now. And I'm going to move on to another question that has come in through the chat as well. And I think we still have this issue around arterial roads because there's, and forty kilometres. And there's commentary in here that says, but if we have segregated bike lanes, we can have faster, you know, we could have forty kilometres on those roads. And we heard right at the beginning that having too many different speeds is actually, you know, cognitively confusing for drivers and inconsistent. But perhaps you could speak particularly to the cyclist dimension around, around arterial roads and picking up on this other question that's coming from councillor Mary Callahan, which is asking about cycling training and understanding of road rules and using lights at night. And obviously cars are the dangerous ones in the space. They present the greatest road danger and we must never forget that. But is there moves afoot around cycle safety skills and, and training as well? Over to you, Damian.
Thanks, Amilyan. A proper, multi-pronged question. Just to pick up my last point first, absolutely. Fully support for schoolchildren to, to be able to avail of cycle training. And I'm sure Antonia will have a more up-to-date data on what Dublin City Council is up to. But I think it's a really good idea. It means then if you do, you know, use a car later on, you've really good traffic sense, you're, you're, you're a good communicator on the road, et cetera. So I fully support cycle training provision. I'd also like to pick up on, on Lorraine's point. Urban villages, you know, our arterials do go through them. And they're, they're really important places, particularly at the moment when people are working from home. Because you know, what's within their one or two kilometre distance is, it's where they do their business, they're shopping, all of their bits and pieces. It's where they meet their, their neighbours, their only sociality they're getting these days. So I think that's, I think that's really important. On a bike, you often, you might, you might stop four or five times in your trip. You might pop out to, you know, to, to buy a litre of milk and to, to post your letter. And then you see someone you meet. So I think it's really important that those arterial routes are safe for, for people cycling, particularly children to school. And I think for most of the radio routes coming into the city, there generally isn't sufficient space to provide the really high-quality type of segregation that, I mean, I first saw it in Utrecht back twenty years ago. And you're really struck that the streets were either, you know, super low speed, people walking, cycling, lots of chats. You can hear the birds sing or else there were bigger roads where you had, you know, extremely wide segregated facilities on either side of the road. Where, you know, you did have the ten-year-old girl cycling to school on their own and the mothers and fathers with their kids on bikes. So I think they're, they're, they're the images we need to keep in mind. And really what we want to move towards is a city which is inclusive for all ages and abilities from eight to eighty years. And I think that's what we need to keep in mind when we're considering the exceptions. And there will, there will be exceptions to the default thirty kph limit.
I think this is a really critical point, which is what are we establishing as the standard for how we approach our community space, which is our public streets and, and spaces. And then, as Lorraine suggested, is we negotiate outwards from there as the, as, as the starting point. I think that's really interesting. Councillor Vincent Jackson has raised a question here about, he, he supports this move, but he wants it, where is the current traffic going to go without adequate public transport investment? Now, I'm interested in, in this question because we weren't actually talking about putting the traffic somewhere else. We were just asking to, to, to slow it down, which is quite interesting. So Lorraine, I'm going to come to you just to address this, this question. Councillor Deirdre Henni, your camera is on and I appreciate you have your hand up, but we are taking questions through the chat just to make the best use of time. Let's see how we go. And we might come back to you further in the meeting. But for now, I'm, I'm working through the, the questions in the chat. So please feel free to raise your, ah, great, you have. Lovely. Thank you so much. But if perhaps you could turn your camera off, it would be, that would be helpful as well. So over to you, Lorraine. Thanks.
Yes, thanks. The, this is something that I think it's one of these traffic engineering conundrums. And how do we communicate what we call traffic evaporation? And we have to think about when everyone lived in these villages. There's actually kind of a similar density of housing and number of people living close to urban villages who lived here quite happily without having to drive not that long ago. So you know, there, there are people, the local trips, there are people who are driving short distances that are now compounding the traffic within our neighbourhoods because there are barriers to them walking and cycling. And walking in particular because of the, the discomfort that they feel not being able to cross roads. So when we do put in that provision for safer places, more places to grass, better infrastructure, more public transport, what we find is people move over to those and we have less cars. Just think about the space that one single car takes up compared to the equivalent of twenty people. A faster-moving car takes up more space on the road than a slower-moving car. And the, you know, we have to kind of think about that equity and balance. And it is proven, it is a real thing. And I, I get that it's hard to imagine that if we do put in this, this provision where we take space from cars, that we actually, the cars do actually disappear. It's not. But if we, and also the, what I showed where we have those pedestrian crossings at regular intervals, cars don't crowd up together in one funnel. So people have a less of a sense of being stuck in traffic. And we have to remember that the drivers are the traffic, the traffic, like, you know, we have this perception as everybody else is the traffic. But if you're driving, you are the traffic too. And we have to, we have to balance all of that.
Great. Thanks, Lorraine. I think I always like reminding people that, that we are the traffic. I think that's really great. And talking about traffic, I think there's another really nice point raised here. And just plugging my computer in because it was fading on me there. And I think it is, yes, Janet Horner has raised the question that only twenty to thirty percent of journeys in the city are commuter journeys. And how do we ensure the priorities of Dublin City Council in the development plan tackle all the journeys and not just commuter ones? And I think you made the point about commuter journeys in your presentation, which is we've prioritised that movement in our, in our cities. But, but more fine-grained analysis of how we move illustrates that there's a lot of other movements happening. I know, Lorraine, you can't talk on behalf of Dublin City Council. But how do we get that shift and that understanding to put both sets of movements in our, in our development plans?
So it, it's, it's mobility, not transport, I think, is the key thing. So when we talk about transport and traffic, we're talking solely about the movement of vehicles. But when we talk about mobility, we're talking about the movement of people. So like, we have to think about how we move people. And that's what should be, that should be the focus within the development plan. They look at where, look at where our land uses are, look at where people are moving. And how do we most effectively move those people between those places and not focus on cars?
Great. That's really lovely. Thank you. I think there's now a really strong question coming up and I ask any of you to, to talk to it. And it's the traditional challenge that we face when we're trying to bring about change. And you can have all the technical arguments, you can have all the opportunities and experiential, you know, illustrations and pictures and all the rest of it. But how do you bring, how do we bring people with us? I know, Antonia, you've got the communications challenge within the Dublin City Council. These councillors are out there every day. They have to respond to the people who put them in, in office. And there will always be pushback about these things. So how do we, how do we bring people together to understand? Do we just push through and then reflect and research and, and respond? Do we take this opportunity? Do we do trials? If anybody from the panel, how do we, how do we stop the divisions that arise? The positioning against each other within, within the city, within the council, within our communities to focus on, on, on bringing about, or does it just take the grand wand of political will? I might come to you, Damian, first because you're not of the, you, you've worked with ECF, they're experts in, in, in this. You've got this experience from other cities. So perhaps you could share some thoughts about this critical need to build bridges, to build sort of community support and, and, and share some core messages at these councillors. How can they take this back to their communities?
Well, I think we're in the midst of the most intriguing experiment this year, this last year ever, this difficult last year ever, with people adopting new mobility habits, going to parks, their lives are being lived locally. And they're reflecting on, on the different type of city we're having at the moment. So I think it's through reflecting on the live experiment we're in the middle of at the moment, not just in Ireland, but across all of Europe in which municipalities Europe-wide have used, used the opportunity, if that word can be used, to, you know, widen footpaths, to provide more cycling facilities, to lower speed limits. So I think it's, there's nothing like a real experience to, to change your, your mindset and your own personal policy. So I think, I think thinking about how COVID has changed our lives and about the, how, how we want our lives to be, it's a unique opportunity that we shouldn't just skip over and try to rush back to the previous slightly skewed business-as-usual model.
I think that's a great comment, given that it doesn't seem that we're rushing anywhere at the moment. Any thoughts of that, I think, have been, have been done. I'm going to go to Lorraine now and then I'll come to you, Antonia. And then we'll be closing this panel because we are nearing the end of our time. So over to you, Lorraine.
No, thanks. I, I have, there's a quote from Professor Laurie Santo, Laurie Santo from Yale. And she said, like, when it comes to happiness, our minds have a way of tricking us into thinking, they're relying to us about happiness. Because we, we think about the quick win. We think about getting there quicker and not about what actually like gives us happiness. And that is the social connectivity. It is, physical activity makes us happy. It releases endorphins. And, but we don't see those immediate effects. And there's this bigger picture. And sometimes communicating that can be a bit harder because people think in the immediate. When they see a barrier, they think about, they have a fear to how it's going to affect them. So if you're going to put in bollards, they just think about the longer journey they have to take. They don't see how this is going to improve their health. So I actually gave a, at a local residents committee, and I've told the story a number of times. But at a local residents committee, I went along and there was a conversation about bollards. They were actually speaking about the positivity of the ones that had previously been there and they were looking for more. And, and I just spoke about the health benefits. I spoke about the anti-aging effects of physical activity, about how, you know, the early onset, like, so dementia has been proven to, like, there's an eight-year delay in the onset of dementia if you live in a more walkable community. It's been proven in Toronto. And so there's all of these community benefits. And at the end of it, one of the old ladies stood up. And I heard afterwards that she was very opposed to these bollards when they went in first. But she stood up at the end of, with the few words I said, and she goes, well, all I can say is God bless those bollards. It's about communicating the bigger picture because people will come to the consultation with the fear. And they will approach the local councillors with the fear. And it's about acknowledging that fear. It is real to them. And just kind of explaining that bigger picture, but getting the community to identify the challenges and work together on solutions.
Lovely. Thank you, Lorraine. Antonia, as the Communications and Promotions Officer at Dublin City Council, you're in the hot seat. We've got fantastic comments in our chat box about the opportunity that is, is coming up in May with Road Safety Week. I'm sure you've got. I'm sure you've got, some people have heard what we've been talking about today. So, what closing remarks and observations would you, would you like to make on this?
Yeah, I, I suppose it's a bit of both, because it, it's a little bit getting the balance. And when COVID mobility hits, you know, we, we had to act quickly. So, there, there wouldn't have been as much consultation done as maybe previously. And, and there was a real need to, look, create more space for walking and cycling. But we've been working since to, to build the team and to enhance the engagement that's happening. And as I mentioned, we've taken on a couple of schools outreach officers. And I think that's just going to be a bit of a game changer with how we get the schools on board, how we get the children to influence the parent behaviour and so on. So, I think those roles are, are, are just really necessary. And then we're taking it on board, I suppose, as part of the walking and cycling action plan that we're going to develop. And that's going to be a very community-based approach. And, you know, I, I, I think this is an interesting workshop today, as in, you know, it's, it's, it's some great experts in, in the room here and getting those voices, I suppose, and working with the councillors, maybe with that way as well, to, to have those maybe higher discussions. And then, so then, when it's, we're going out to communities, both from the Dublin City Council staff and also councillors, that we're a little bit, you know, on, on the same wavelength, or that we're all armed with the same information. But just to touch on Lorraine's point, I, I think it's, the, the aim as what we're trying to do this year is, is to, during the consultation, is to educate, but also to listen and inform ourselves. And we do need to hear the fears. And sometimes it is about people feeling that they're heard, that even if, if something goes in that they maybe weren't for initially. You know, we've, we've taken on board a lot of the concerns, but it's about hearing from the, the whole community and diverse voices, and not just maybe the, the, the same voices all the time, who can be very overpowering, especially on, on some social media channels and stuff. And that can change the, you know, it can lead the, the rhetoric down, down certain routes. So, I think it's really important to maybe open up that conversation with, with, with all involved. So, I suppose, yeah, a, a bit of a, getting a bit of a balance, but also building, as Dublin City Council, we're keen to build our engagement, build our skills and practise more in that area also.
That's great. Thank you so much, Antonia. I wanted to pick up about the, the volume of voices as well, because the, the low-traffic neighbourhoods that they've done in London in response to COVID, of course, got very loud opposition initially, as vehicles came back into that space. But six weeks down the track, they started doing the research and looking for the neighbourhood response. And local people love it, the research. So, it's, it's, it's engagement, it's evaluation, and it's research, and all of these things, and giving people the opportunity to experience what is different. We've got some lovely remarks and comments from people in the chat. I really appreciate their, they've said, thank you for our lovely panel of speakers. It's nearly time to close. We have a few minutes, and I would like to pass to Patricia Reedy, who's the Acting Senior Engineer from Environment and Transport Department, who's going to make a few closing remarks. I think I met Patricia at a city conference in Dublin. Yeah.
We've met a number of times. Lovely to see you all. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for that. I've learnt so much today. I'm really delighted to join you all and hear a lovely, diverse range of views. Firstly, I'd like to thank Hazel Schu for continued support, the Lord Mayor, and for opening the ceremony. And Bronwyn, you have done a stellar job in sharing it. Thank you so much. Your patience, your... Actually, there's a job for you here, if you want, Dublin City Council, we could do with you, Bronwyn. No, you've done a fantastic job, and I really want to acknowledge that. I also want to thank Rod. I'm very impressed with his presentation, as with all of your presentations. Donna, Mairead, Antonia, Damian and Lorraine, I've learned some wonderful new phrases. Valuable, not, not vulnerable, and indicator species for children. I'm, I'm just loving it all. What really strikes me, because we've been working so hard since the COVID bomb went off in, in March, trying to enhance walking and cycling throughout Dublin City, both with the COVID and with the stimulus project. And really, this is, strikes me as, and, and you've all touched on it, another really important tool in the toolbox of, of making the city a better place for walking and cycling. And really, this Love 30 campaign is, is very valuable, and, and it's all part of the One Mosaic. And the, the joined-upness of it all and the synergy of it all is very striking to me. So, I just want to acknowledge that as well. And I'm under terrible pressure to give you a, a, a small bit of an idea on the next steps. Rosanna, who's organised today's workshop, will kill me if I don't tell you what's going to happen next. So, basically, after today's workshop, the road safety team are going to each individual area committee. And the dates, Rosanna will communicate out by email. So, various dates in February and early March. And they're going to take the presentation to each of these area committee meetings in order to get feedback. And, and basically, then they'll start preparing some draft bylaws. So, this is very much a consultative process. This is the first kickoff of it. And they're really trying to aim to have this as a final proposal by the 5th of May, 2021, and bring it to the Transport SPC Committee in May. What's very clear is that COVID, unfortunately, is not going anywhere for the short term. It's going to be with us, unfortunately, for a lot longer than many of us would like. And there are, this is an opportunity for all of us, all of us, absolutely all of us, to think anew and to use it as, well, what do we want for cities? Maybe the old way wasn't really what we wanted, and maybe it is a really good opportunity to, to hit a restart button, think anew. So, once again, just to finish off, thanks to everyone. Really enjoyed it. And see you all soon, hopefully not in a virtual sense. Thank you.
Patricia, that's really lovely. Fantastic words. And it's always good to know what's going to, what's going to happen next. And in my role of chair, just to close, I also would like to thank Rosanna for your coordination and working with you. I've enjoyed working with your team over different times with Dublin. Patricia, I like that idea that you want me to come and work with Dublin. If that involves a European passport, I'd be there tomorrow.
Oh, the old Brexit question. Oh, let's just knock on there today.
Right, the B-word. I am actually already working in Dublin on a women and transport project, looking at how women feel safe in public space. We also are working towards hosting Walk 21 in Ireland, in Dublin next year. So, we've got some really great times, some, some ambition out into next year, hopefully in person. We will walk together on the streets of Dublin and talk more about walking and speed. I mean, we have to start with speed. At Stockholm last year, they said, if you do nothing else, do speed. And, and it's, it's a fantastic foundation for the livable communities we know that we want. So, thank you to Dublin City Council. Thank you, Rosanna, for having me. And councillors, thank you for coping with the chat function and for not only all your good questions and challenging issues on the table, but your thanks and appreciation to our fantastic speakers as well. So, I, I'm going to leave you here. We're going to say goodbye. And I look forward to this opportunity, getting out to your residents and, and changing Dublin and, and seeing that progress. Thank you so much, and goodbye.
Maybe everybody could turn on their camera for one wave goodbye. Be nice to see everybody's faces.
Goodnight, sleep.
Bye, bye. Keep safe, everybody. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.